Meeting of the Pittsburgh City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone in the audience, I will state for the record, there is very obviously no one in the audience recording this meeting. At this time, I ask that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. And would everyone please join me in the salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zerella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
President.
Counselor Kucher.
Here.
Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone in the audience, I will state for the record, there is very obviously no one in the audience recording this meeting.
Just hit me, Sally.
It's time. I ask that all-- There we go. Just for anyone watching at home who's confused by that, that was just a slight delay because we have Counselor Cregan participating remotely and listening in on the broadcast feed, which is delayed by a few seconds from what's actually happening in the council.
And she was letting us know she's here.
Yes, and she was letting us know that she is, in fact, present remotely. Madam Clerk, you may continue and ready.
Thank you. Counselor Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Jeanette Ali. Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Shilts.
Here.
Counselor Van Hazing. And Counselor Walsh.
Here.
So we have two absent, nine members present. Will one be as usual?
Thank you very much. We have no one signed in remotely for public forum. If there is anyone in the audience wishing to speak, you can approach the center podium. All set? All right, we have no one wishing to speak in public forum. Before I kick off our announcements, I would simply like to congratulate and thank the city Clerk's office and our excellent poll workers for yet another very successfully conducted election. Everything I've heard indicates that everyone in the city of Pittsburgh, who, every eligible voter in the city of Pittsburgh who wanted to vote was able to vote, and every ballot was securely and efficiently processed and tabulated.
Thank you. Thank you. They work very hard. We're a great team, and it's the whole city hall, it's not just the Clerk's office. It's the police, the fire, doing the outdoor lights. It's a great effort from the whole community.
And Paul Boishman.
And Paul Boishman.
Especially Paul Boishman.
It's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one additional announcement. The next meeting of the Widowed Helping Widowed Support Group will take place Thursday, November 14th, 2024, from 4:00 until 5:30 PM in room 205 at the Pittsburgh State University Recreation Center, 130 North Street. Kelly Lynn and Bernie Schultz will co-facilitate the meeting. Next up, we have the report of the, oh, actually, I did want to note also on the subject of the election, we had 51% turnout, which, to my knowledge, is a record, at least within the last decade, probably quite a bit longer. A very large portion of that was mail-in and in-person early voting. And again, just a phenomenal job by everyone. And honestly, you know, I know there were unique circumstances for this election, which we do not need to get into, but I hope to see similar turnout levels in the future because it really is important. You know, it's encouraging to see that many people exercising their voice, whether I agree with them, disagree with them, or anywhere in between.
And if you look at the registered voters, they're up over 30. They're 30,355, so 51 is on the 30, which is about 3,000 more than in 2020.
Very nice. Report of the Appointments Committee, Counselor Kucher.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointments Committee met earlier this evening. We took up three new appointments and one reappointment. The first new appointment was the Pittsburgh Water-Wastewater Commission, term to expire November 6, 2028, and that was Jason LeFerts, and he was approved unanimously. The second new appointment was the Municipal Hearing Officer, term to expire February 1st, 2026, Nicholas Cordio, which was approved. There was a new appointment to the Pittsburgh Human Rights Commission, term to expire November 5, 2027, and that was Michael Baltier, which was unanimously approved. And a reappointment to the Pittsburgh Human Rights, term to expire May 1, 2027, David Roth, which was approved.
Mr. President--
Counselor Boishman?
Could we pull the appointment for the Cordios, please?
Sure. Or rather, that's at the discretion of whoever makes the motion, but do I have a motion of any sort on this matter?
Motion to approve the Appointments Committee reports, with the exception of the appointment of Nicholas Cordio.
Second.
All right, I have a motion. Second, on the motion.
On the motion, I just want to say, that young man over there, standing there, that's going on a wastewater treatment plant, Jason?
Mm-hmm.
A lot of you probably don't remember, maybe Amy Green does, and probably you do. He started that news magazine in Pittsburgh, it used to be called a Report, right?
God bless you.
Pittsburgh Press, okay, Pittsburgh Press.
Oh, you got to bring that back.
I just wanted you to know, to show you that I'm up there in age, but--
Let the record show that Counselor Boishman is up there in age.
I want to say thank you, love. And I even going, I'm going to support you, too.
Do I have any objection to the approval of the, Counselor Cregan? Go ahead.
I have absolutely no objection, but I just wanted to augment Counselor Boishman's comment. Jason LeFerts was a most excellent editor of the Pittsburgh Pride when it did exist. He has superb reporting skills. Having him on Water and Wastewater is going to get clear information on a topic that is, you know, often difficult to understand, very technical. So congratulations, I was delighted to see your name. This is not an objection. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cregan. So have it, seeing no objection to the approval of the three appointments excluding Municipal Hearing Officer? I'm sorry? Yes, thank you for reminding me, I apologize. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
Counselor Van Hazing, sorry, and Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
So that's nine yes.
Thank you very much. We now have before us the appointment of Nicholas Cordio to the position of Municipal Hearing Officer.
Mr. President.
Counselor Boishman.
Before somebody makes a motion, I was wondering if the planning board can come up and explain this position on Nicholas Cordio.
Okay.
I'm having some thoughts about not supporting something that I can't because he doesn't meet the qualifications, what I have in front of me, and that.
Okay. You can come on up, Director Murphy. Counselor, do you have more detailed information?
Do you like me to give you an overview?
Yeah, would you please?
So the Municipal Hearing Officer's responsibility is actually quite prescriptive in the 40U language. The hearing officer has to, he receives the appeals, has to schedule them within 45 days, you know, sends out that notification, gives them the opportunity to reschedule if necessary, can't be a member of any code department that's issuing tickets, receives annual training to conduct administrative hearings. These hearings are informal, follow rules set forth in Chapter 30A. What the hearing officer's role is, is to determine whether the violation occurred and whether it was committed by the person notified to appear. So that's in total, and they have to be able to write, have good writing skills, write a good decision. Nick has been working very closely with us as we build out this program, so he's very familiar with the whole process as we've worked it out and worked out the whole flow of the procedures, and reviewed the regulations repeatedly throughout that process. We are in a bit of a, we wanted to get this moving very quickly. We also know that there's still bugs to work out, so to some degree, Nick is serving as our guinea pig while we know we're going to work out some bugs. We don't expect this to be, he could be, he could be great at it and want to do it forever, but I don't expect that he's going to want to. That's why we only made it a year-long appointment. But there is training that he's going to attend in the early spring. We have a whole packet of training information for him, including how to write a good decision. And so that, that's sort of the toolkit that he's been given, and he's a smart guy, he's a very even-tempered guy, except I expect him to be very successful at this.
I still ask questions.
Counselor, go ahead.
What I just don't want, wanted to see is, I don't want to get, whoever gets the job, he or she gets the job, so I got to make sure I say everything correctly. And then all of a sudden, because they don't know the code, the codes that good, we're calling up the person over here in the right that sits over there, and then our bill goes sky-high, and everybody's going to complain about, oh, wickedness, lawyer fees gone way up.
It is not their responsibility to know the codes.
They don't have--
It is the hearing, is not the hearing officer's responsibility to do that. It's the inspector's responsibility who's issuing the ticket to know what the codes are. The hearing officer is really just looking at, did the ticket get served to the proper person? Did the violation get, occur and was documented? And that's the inspector's responsibility to do. And if those two things are correct, and he is in fact, he or she is in fact the person that had the violation, then the hearing officer should be upholding that fine.
So just, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the way I'm hearing it, to explain it to anyone who, you know, is wondering, the hearing officer is essentially in the role of the jury, not the judge. The hearing officer is a finder of fact, not a determiner of law. You wouldn't go to the hearing officer and say, "The inspector misinterpreted this law." That's an argument you would make to the district court.
Right.
Or the, would be the district or superior?
Superior.
Superior, thank you, Counselor.
So basically, he's acting as a clerk magistrate.
Right. So all they're being asked to do is determine whether the inspector presented the facts accurately. Anything else would go to the courts.
And any party who doesn't agree with the hearing officer's decision has that right to still appeal to the court.
I understood that. I understood, I understood that part of it, because I voted for that, because they had the right to appeal to the courts.
Right.
But I thought he was going to be there to listen, not just to say, Anthony did the right procedure, he gave Paul Boishman the ticket, you're up, you were right, Paul Boishman's guilty. I thought he was going to sit there and listen to why I use, I'll use my, cutting my grass. I didn't cut my grass today, this month here. The reason why I didn't cut my grass is because I was sick. So he doesn't make a decision on that. I got a ticket, I got a fine for, say, $25, and he didn't, he doesn't care if I was sick or not, I have to pay the fine.
That's correct.
Yeah, his role would not be to determine whether discretion was properly exercised or anything like that. Does that answer your question, Counselor?
Yeah, it's going to have to, yeah.
Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, just, you know, you mentioned the good writing skills. Would it be helpful if this person had some legal background, maybe like a paralegal background?
It would, yeah. We did have a previous hearing officer in the queue, and she had to withdraw because she had a health issue that came up, and she couldn't, she couldn't do it. Yep.
So there is a real rush to get somebody in the position.
We want to get it moving, and like I said, to some degree, there's still kinks that we know we're going to have to work out, so that's why we only appointed him for a year. I would expect that at the end of the year, you know, things will be in a smoother position, we'll also have a better understanding of other things that might be going on in the city, and have more systems in place, and so at that point, we might be looking for somebody different.
But for the year, I guess you're, I saw somewhere where you're going to review in six months?
Within six months, yeah.
Okay, so, so, you know, if things aren't working out in six months, you could maybe find--
Make a, right, make a different--
Again, a better appointment?
Choice, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Oh, all right.
Counselor Green?
I think this is moving in the right direction, considering for the past 10 years, through the NICE committee, we've talked about who's going to be the person that, you know, unburdens the court system, hearing all the violations and citations issued through NICE. You know, I mean, it's wonderful to have code enforcement when it can be enforced, and then when it can unburden the court system, this is kind of the mediator to say, yep, you know, I mean, yep, you're guilty, and now we need to collect the 25 or 50 or $300, whatever it is, and then it's, then it's done. We're not tying up anybody else other than, poor Mr. Cordio at this time, and I think that he might be the perfect candidate to do this with his IT experience, especially when you talk about wanting to implement additional or make improvements to systems. I mean, he's an IT guy, he knows systems. You know, so I, I think that this is going to be a benefit, and not that I have visions of seeing the law department's expenses go down, but it may help shave some of that off, where we could be the interceptor before it gets to be a huge blowout of a situation, just, you know, yes or no, guilty or not, and then we move on from there. So I'm, I'm going to support this, only because I know for the years and years through the NICE committee, being able to have that--
It's been on our wish list.
Like, you know, okay, you've got the red sticker on the door, that means trouble, you know what I mean? And now we've got, we've got a means, you know, to enforce it. And then I think it's also a nice checks and balance with the inspectors, who say, yeah, if you really want to crack down on enforceable violations, here's the means to do it. We're equipping you with all, with everything you need, so let's, let's get it started.
And the inspectors are very anxious to move forward with this. We're all very anxious to move forward with it.
Yeah, I know the inspectors are. So yes, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, so thank you.
Motion to approve. I had one more thing from Counselor Boishman, would you mind, Counselor?
All right. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman?
Listen, my question to you, if we stay here tonight, when does he start? In six months from now, after he goes to the school, or is it not immediately?
No, well, it would start very quickly. We're waiting for the ticket books to come in, and then ticket books, then tickets can start to be issued. People have 21 days to pay their fine or appeal, and then if they appeal, we have 45 days to schedule those appeals. So there is a little bit of time before the first hearings would happen. I would say a couple of months before the first hearings would happen, but I would expect that, you know, as soon as we have ticket books, tickets will start to be issued.
Yay, ticket books!
Okay, I yield the floor.
Counselor Cregan?
Yep, just the word communication caught my ear, and I know that we will have, there's going to be a couple of months, as Executive Director Murphy mentioned, before, you know, full implementation. Sorry, I've got things happening on the screen. This is my first time doing remote, so. My question is to Liz, our plan to inform the electorate, are we going to do a big social media? Is Danielle Ray going to cover this for the Sentinel? Are there going to be, you know, slips of paper going home and the water bills or what have you? What is our process for letting Pittsburgh know in a uniform manner that this is not only in the works, but about to lift off?
So there was a press release a while ago, but I don't think it really got much fanfare at the time.
Yeah.
So we'll issue another press release, probably wouldn't do mailers at going home.
Sure.
But we'll certainly do a social media blitz to, you know, to make sure that people are aware.
Thank you, because the, again, the issues of translation and the issues of, you know, timeliness, because there will be people at that first meeting who say, no one told me, I didn't know this was happening, et cetera. And I, you know, you guys know what you're doing very well, so that preparedness, I'm very glad to hear is in the queue. Yield the floor.
Well, and just if I could add to that--
Go right ahead.
--a lot, you know, if somebody has a trash violation, depending on what it is, they might get a ticket right away, but most other things, they're going to get an order to correct. So they're going to have that warning of whatever, depending on the significance of the issue, right? Sometimes it's like a correct in 24 hours, if it's a health-safety issue, but otherwise it's probably 30 days. So people have their warnings that, that they have to correct something, and then if they don't correct it, that's when they get the ticket. So there are some exceptions with trash, though.
All right. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yeah.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
And Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
That's nine in favor.
Thank you very much. That concludes the report of the Appointments Committee. A report of the Committee on Records, Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, President Zerella. We have reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have motion and second to approve the report of the Committee on Records. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Nine in favor.
Thank you very much, passes unanimously. Next, we have a request for suspension of the rules on 185-24, order that the city of Pittsburgh hereby raise an appropriate, the sum of $645,000 crediting school department expenses for the purpose of funding a shortfall in the FY '24 net school spending requirement. The purpose of this request for suspension is to enable the auditors and assessors' offices to get the ball rolling with DOR in light of the fact that we've suffered some delays in our tax classification process. This will enable that to move more efficiently as we try to find a good scheduling date for that hearing. Counselor Cruz, question on this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is there anyone with suspension of the rules relevant to here to talk to us about this, this order?
There doesn't appear to be. We did, I, if we do suspend the rules, I, I mean, I can't say before we suspend the rules because it would be out of order, but I do have some information on how this came about and everything, but there isn't anyone here this evening.
For suspension of the rules, Mr. President, someone from the administration, someone should be here, I feel that way, and that's, that's how I feel about it. I yield the floor, thank you.
All right, Counselor Walsh?
Can you just clarify, what number are you talking, what?
185-24.
Okay.
Counselor Green?
I just want to, again, I struggle with, I mean, I know that the school department needs money, but I'm concerned that there is nobody here to talk to us about it, and I'm more concerned with the definition of, you know, the obligation for net school spending requirement. So I, I just need to hear from somebody that that, in fact, is so that we have the resources and the money available to the kids who deserve that, as defined as net school spending requirement.
Since this, before I go to Counselor Kucher, since this appears to be a common theme, aside from the, I obviously can't correct or address the physical absence of a spokesperson, but in order to fully inform the council, I would ask consent, which we'll have to take by roll call, but I would ask consent to present what I suppose technically would qualify as deliberation prior to taking this up as an agenda item, just so that I can clarify where this is coming from, so that people and the public will know. Counselor Green?
And again, is it, I mean, is it going to be detrimental if, because if it wasn't for suspension, this would go to finance?
Right.
And it would be heard in finance, and then the week after that, we would get the ruling on what that was, either approved or not approved, and open it up for debate and deliberation. So is, is the week delay, if we, if we decide not to suspend the rules, is it going to be detrimental to the school department that we don't act on this tonight?
So in order to answer that, what I would ask is that someone make a motion for suspension on this for the limited purpose of enabling me to answer these questions.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
No.
Counselor Cregan?
Say yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
No.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
And Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Seven to two.
Thank you very much. That is a, I believe that's a two-thirds majority, am I correct? My mental math is not--
I make a motion to hold 185-24, to let him go to finance, which is actually tomorrow night.
Second. On the motion, let me, first, let me just see if we did get suspension at all, because otherwise the motion is moved.
Fair enough.
So two-thirds majority, we'd be five, okay, so yeah, we're, we're good. So on the motion, just because the question has been asked, I'm not trying to lobby for one side or the other here, but because the question has been asked, this is, it is represented to me and to the Finance Chair that this is required as net school spending to address a transportation costs shortfall. So it's not, I suppose you could argue that it's not technically net school spending as in our formula-calculated amount, but it is an amount that we are legally responsible for compensating the school department for. And this request came from Jackie Cronin and Chris Paquette on the premise that it will enable them to accelerate the tax certification process because we have had to push the tax classification hearing back near the end of the month due to scheduling conflicts. Again, I'm not lobbying in one direction or another, but that is the reasoning behind the request. Did I have any, Counselor Boishman?
Mr. President, I remember when we had finance and Mr. Shelley, I think it was Mr. Shelley who came up from the school department, and he was talking about the costs, and he also informed us, and I think you were there, Mr., at that meeting, that he informed us that he didn't know about this year, and he felt that he might be back to us about bussing again for more money.
I believe that is what this--
That happened here, because we were, because when they had the special, they had to hire special vans for special kids, and they couldn't believe the cost, and we suggested maybe they should buy their own buses at that time. So in all honesty, we knew, some of us knew about it when we had the financial meeting, and that they came in front of us and talked to us, but they didn't say about DOR, he just said that they're going to be shot more money, and they're going to have to come back in front of us at that time. So, and remember that?
I do recall that. Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for a point of housekeeping, I made a motion to hold, I just, I want to make sure we're not going to hold to the following city council, and then it still gets sent to finance. Do I need to withdraw that and make a specific motion for that housekeeping?
No, if you're, if it is before us tonight, and you're making a motion to send it to finance, then it will go through the normal process. It would go to finance tomorrow, then to the, there is, there's finance tomorrow.
Oh, I looked on the Agenda Center, it said it was canceled.
Oh, was it? Yeah, no one told me that, but okay.
I looked at the Agenda Center, please, I could have read it wrong.
I'll, I will have to check, but--
Is that as well?
Hmm?
Yeah.
Finance is tomorrow.
I thought it said November 30.
We have the technology. We have the technology.
Meeting was canceled, and there was a meeting.
Oh, that could be.
Yeah, I think that's what we ended up doing.
That's why I said please.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it would end up going to Finance, then to the following council meeting, and for, for final approval. So I have a motion and second.
It was, it was canceled.
Tomorrow was canceled?
Thirteenth was canceled.
Finance needed Thursday.
Cancellation, okay, okay, that's correct.
See, I didn't see that.
Right, it was rescheduled. Yeah, okay, so there is a motion and second to refer this matter to tomorrow evening's Finance Committee, at which point it would then be sent on to the subsequent city council meeting for final approval or rejection. On the motion, Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just, I've, I'm, I'm sure that this is all well and good, and the relevant departments have done their due diligence, but I think it would be beneficial, and it's important for, especially with suspension of the rules and, and, you know, $645,000. It's important for our benefit and the public's that explanations are made and by the individuals making them. So I have no doubt that this is all, all well and good, but for the public more than anything, I think that they, they need to be here.
Fair enough.
Yield the floor. Thank you.
On the motion, Counselor Boishman?
On the motion, Mr. President, I got a question for you, if I can ask you a question. It goes for, Chris Paquette wants it for, and Jackie Cronin wants it for DOR purposes, so this way here we can get results back to free cash?
I don't know if it's free cash specifically. I know it has to do with the tax classification and certification by DOR. I'm not entirely clear on the details myself. I was asked to request suspension with this explanation, and I am conveying that to the best of my ability. All set? Counselor Boishman?
Yeah, I'm all set, sorry.
Okay, Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I think I would, I would be much more comfortable having this go to Finance and having it vetted a little more, having some explanation from someone who is actually in charge of this to explain to the council and to the, and to the city what we're doing with this $645,000 and why we're spending it.
Fair enough. Counselor Kuchar?
I have to agree with my colleagues that if this was so important that it needed a suspension of the rules, somebody should have been here tonight. So, you know, I, I would support Counselor Cruz's motion to send this to Finance for tomorrow.
I am comfortable doing that. I do just want to note in the spirit of disclosure that the reason this was requested very late is because we, they and I had been going back and forth on the scheduling of the tax classification hearing. It became clear today that we weren't going to be able to schedule it before the last week before, you know, the week before Thanksgiving, and then they said, well, in that case, is there any chance we could get suspension? So I'm, again, not debating, I just wanted everyone to have the full picture of how this came about.
With all due respect, I think I still have the floor.
You do, you do, yes.
With all due respect, if that was the case, somebody should be here. And the fact that they're not here, it can wait until tomorrow.
Okay. One more question. Counselor Cruz?
Question, Mr. President, regarding the timelines, considering that Finance would need to approve, and that it would need to go the next week for the approval of the report. Are there penalties involved? What would happen if they don't meet this deadline?
I am not clear on that. My understanding is that we would not be beyond any actual hard deadline, but rather that it would make it more difficult to have a timely completion of the process that would proceed from the tax classification hearing. But again, I don't have, I, I am very much not a municipal finance professional, and I don't actually grasp the full import of the reason for the timing here. I know what we're being asked to do, but I don't, I don't fully understand the reasoning behind it. I just know it was requested, and, you know, so I felt it was appropriate to present that request to the council.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. President. I think that's, that's all the more reason, you know, if we have questions, the public has questions, we should have the opportunity to ask them.
Mm-hmm. And I'm sorry, Counselor Boishman, you have actually spoken twice on this motion, so being that this is a regular city council meeting rather than a committee, we have to move on. All right, move the question. All right, so I have a motion and second to hold, or rather, to commit to Finance. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Absolutely. President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
And Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
That passes nine zero in favor.
All right, that is unanimous. Next, we have a number of further Finance orders. Unless anyone moves for a full reading, I am going to waive reading, and those will stand referred to Finance. We have 183-24, an ordinance in first reading. This is the salary ordinance for the municipal hearing officer, which we already approved in petition form. This simply is now coming back to us in its fully drafted form from the Solicitor's Office. In light of that, and in order to get this process rolling, I would request a suspension of the rules on this, so it doesn't have to go back to Legislative Affairs.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
193-24.
Second.
I have a motion and second to suspend the rules on 193-24. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kuchar?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yep.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Shilts?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
That's nine in favor.
Thank you very much. The matter is before the council.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second. On the motion, Counselor Fleming?
Yeah, I have a few questions, because I actually do not recall this. I probably was not at that meeting.
That's all right, go ahead.
So I, I'm a little confused. We have many people who serve that we appoint, and we don't pay them. So my question is, when we approve this person for this position, did they already know that there was going to be a stipend attached to it?
Yes, because we had already approved it. We just approved the person earlier this evening.
No, I know that.
We had already approved in principle this ordinance. We just haven't gone through the procedural steps to enter it into law.
Yeah, I don't think I was there, that's why I'm, I'm, so we're having budget issues, and we're adding new positions, paid positions, for people that are appointed to a committee, their appointments. Most of our appointments don't get paid. I'm just curious why this one needs to be a paid position.
So most of our positions that we approve through appointments are on volunteer boards and commissions. This is more in the nature of a city employee. It is not a benefited position. There are no benefits, no pension. It's a stipend just to compensate him for his time, and the reason, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason that we are paying this position is because it is a much more time-intensive position than, say, I'll use myself as an example, than meeting, you know, once a month on the zoning board. Once the ball gets rolling on this, he could potentially be hearing a fairly large number of appeals in any given month, which could take up a significant chunk of his time.
Okay, so we're, we're saying we're going to pay him a stipend of $200 a month, and then $80 per case, so he could potentially have 30 cases in a month. So this is really not a position that can be budgeted.
The, the amount is, is going to vary, but it's based on the premise of we're doing more ticketing, so there's more revenue coming in to pay for this person to do this work.
And the average, I mean, there, obviously, the fines and fees vary depending on the offense, but at least speaking of zoning code violations and so forth, those fees are $300 a day for a violation. So essentially, I would expect if, you know, given that our inspectors are good at their jobs, there would be fairly few tickets overturned.
Correct.
And unless a ticket is overturned, the fine from the ticket would pay, would more than cover the cost of paying this individual.
Okay.
As an example, Revere is a, is a community that we've been working closely with because they've implemented this a few years ago, and they had kind of worked out all their kinks. When we met with them, and that was, I think, April of this year, they said they were averaging about $30,000 a month in income related to 40U. So they, they're a population of about 60,000, so they're a little bit bigger than Pittsburgh. I wouldn't expect that ours would be 30,000 a month, but some portion of that.
But we're saying this isn't a benefited position.
It is not.
In this position, maybe not, but the person doing the position is already benefited because he's a full-time employee.
That, that's correct. We're not adding any benefits to our existing obligations because that person already gets benefits, but it could have been a person outside of the city. We did go back and forth whether or not it should be a part-time position, a stipended position, but in, in no scenario, I think, would we have ever thought it would have been a volunteer position.
Well, he's going to be reviewed in six months. I would think that we should see how the position goes with the person before we start paying them.
I don't know that we can ask somebody to do that level of work and not compensate them for payment. It's not a volunteer board.
So, so was this, was, how was this presented? I mean, was, did the city go to this person? Did other people come?
Like I said, we had, we had, we had another person.
Then how did we arrive at the person that we did end up appointing?
Because we, this is somebody that we were working with, and he, we, we knew he could jump right into the job. Anybody else would take some time to hire, vet, and appoint, and then get going.
Or was the enticement, the fact that they were going to be paid?
I mean, generally, is any time somebody takes a job, they want to be paid for it.
But on most of the boards, they don't.
This isn't a board, this isn't a board.
Right, this is. I see you, Counselor Cregan.
It's an appointment, it's an appointment.
I, I was appointed, too.
Okay.
Yes, Counselor, many of our appointments are volunteer positions, but we also appoint many people who are paid employees of the city, and this is one of them. Knowing, speaking, again, speaking only for myself, knowing the amount of work that will go into this position, well, okay, I was about to lie. I would do it for free, but that's because I find this sort of thing interesting. Most people would not put that number of hours in for free. Most people are not mega nerds like myself, but I don't think we would be able to get someone who meets the qualifications and would be willing to do this without any pay or with the prospect of future pay. It just, it, it doesn't strike me as likely, knowing the number of hours we would be asking this person to put in once the ball gets rolling.
I, I, I feel that boards like the, and it's not a board, but zoning, planning, that's not just a one-time-a-month visit. They take time, several days through the month, to investigate, read what's going on, the plans, and the only one that might be getting a minimal stipend is the chair.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I sort of feel this is on the same playing field as that. And I just think we're just adding a new position. We may be getting revenue, and what's the guarantee we're going to get paid by these people? We have a hard enough times getting, collecting fines now.
If they, through 40U, if they don't pay, then come the next October, we send off the unpaid claims to the assessor, and it rolls over to the tax bill. So that's one of the nice benefits of 40U, is that unpaid fines will roll over to the tax bill the following year.
I would think that the money that we get from 40U should go into the budget and not be, I'm just, I'm against this, I really am against it, and so that's all I have to say.
Okay. Counselor Cregan?
Thank you. So last, April of 2022, I had interviewed Michael Wells, who is the Health Director in the City of Revere, and I emailed all my fellow counselors, and I believe Liz Murphy as well, a kind of an overview of how they implement 40U, the scale of it, the revenue, the complexity. They do have paid inspectors who are very vigorous in, you know, going out on trash day, making sure that people are not leaving trash and that they attend to it. And they are very quick with the citations, and it has been a boon for this city. So when I am back at my home computer, because I'm at the School Committee Conference right now, representing Pittsburgh, and anyway, I will resend that email, because I remember having conversations with some of you guys, because when it was very new to us, and again, this is, what, two and a half years ago, you know, I, I wanted to understand more about it, so I spent a couple of hours with Michael on the phone, and he was very generous with his time, and I know he's been very helpful to, to Pittsburgh per, you know, Liz. So I have also just emailed all of us the direct link to the Revere 40U webpage on their Board of Health. So you can see how they have organized this information, you can see, you know, what the procedure is. It, it's really very simple, you know? We don't have the teeth for things having to do with the barking dogs and the trash and the, you know, dilapidated buildings and the rest of it. This is what allows us to do the jobs we should be doing. And that's, you know, that's very clear, that's what the legislature, you know, intended with this 40U, and I believe with great confidence that we will benefit, and that the neighbors of the people with the problem properties will be very thankful that we now have this. And I also believe that other communities, you know, like nearer to us that don't have it, will look at us and say, oh, they're doing this, how is that working? Because Revere is a long ride, but I, so I didn't go visit, I didn't drive around, but I, you know, had a pretty detailed conversation with him and follow-up emails, so I could present a, you know, kind of like a focus paper for my colleagues here. And I, I will look for that in a few days and get that to you guys. So I hope that'll be helpful, Counselor Fleming and everyone else.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Cruz?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I ask Director Murphy a question?
Yes, well, I apologize for the earlier lapse in order. I should have requested that the motion be withdrawn before we took further input. At this time, would we be willing to withdraw the motion?
I'm willing to withdraw the motion.
All right, thank you, Counselor. In that case, go ahead, Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wondering about that myself. So it's $80 per case for the hearing officer.
Yep.
What do we know, like, about the average of our, our fees are, fines are for specific things?
Actually, I do have a list. If I recall, and I apologize, I don't, I don't want to misspeak, but I do think that the, the fines vary quite a bit, so it could be anywhere, we have a whole bunch of them that are around $200, and they're sort of all over the place.
Is anything?
But I would say there are quite a few of them, especially when we're looking at our problem property ordinance, that are 200, 300, 250.
But nothing less than 80, right?
There are some 25s, although I don't know specifically what that is. I don't know, I, I have the, the ordinance, but I don't, I don't know enough about sanitary code, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's quite all right.
To tell you what that is.
But we could, in a six-month period, we could get the quantifiable data of what revenue the city brings in, if the position is paying for itself like we hope it does, things of that nature, right?
Yes, and, and actually, I'm seeing the trash ones are, they escalate, 25, 50, 100, then 250.
Because I know the most important thing is removing the blight, right? That's what we're trying to do here, but.
Getting compliance.
But I remember the big part of this was the position should pay for itself.
Correct.
And the fees, so, yeah, I would just, I think if in six months, once this review period is over, if we can just get some, some hard data of what, what we're bringing in and.
I would be happy to report that back to you.
I look forward to it. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Just a moment, Counselor. I just wanted to comment on that briefly, namely that if the, specifically, if our low-ball fees are trash fees, it seems to me that the people who are likely to contest the fines, rather than simply remedying the situation, are the ones who are likely to be repeat offenders and are going to come back and end up paying for it over time. The ones who are likely to be one-and-done, well, hooray. Like you said, we removed the blight. And then if we ended up spending, what would it be, $55 to remove blight from one of our neighborhoods, and it never comes back again, seems like money well-spent to me at least, but that's my opinion. Counselor Fleming?
Okay. I think that sort of was where I was going to go with this. All of these cases would come in front of this hearing officer, but you could say, we're giving you the chance to go clean it, and they clean it. So we don't receive anything from that.
It would only be the tickets that get appealed, right? So if somebody just pays the ticket, then there's, there's no work for the municipal hearing officer to do. But like I said, that hearing officer isn't going to be making kind of judgment-call decisions like, oh, I'm going to give you more time. Why don't you just go clean it up? They're going to be saying, did you, did you do what the violation, the ticket says you did? Did you receive the ticket? Are you the person that is on the ticket? Like, did you actually perpetrate the violation? And if those things are correct, then they have to, then he has to hold up the ticket. He can't, they can't just let it, we can't waive the ticket. So it's not really, it's not that, it's not a negotiation. Not like when, when folks go to court, property owners might go to court and appeal it. It's often the case that the court will give them more time, that will, the court will waive the fines. This hearing officer is not going to be in that position.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else before we renew the motion? Counselor Schultz?
I'll renew the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. I have a motion and second to approve, to pass 19324 through its first reading. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
President Zarella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yeah.
Counselor Krujer?
Yes.
Counselor Cregan?
Yes.
Counselor Cruz?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
And Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
That passes nine zero in favor.
Thank you very much. We have one petition for public safety. J Motors Incorporated to petition for a Class II dealer's license at 971 John Fitch Highway. That stands referred to public safety. And then I have submitted a petition on behalf of an individual who contacted me, one Sam Cole, who wishes the Records Committee to review the characterization of his comments in the minutes of the May 2nd, 2023 council meeting. And that will stand referred to the Committee on Records. Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that I don't think the Records Committee has ever met before, but we're more than happy to do that, and, well, meet with Joanna to schedule that meeting, preferably like right before the next city council meeting.
Excellent.
Thank you.
That concludes our business for the evening. Motion adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Seeing no objection, we are adjourned.